Is everybody here that wants to be here, I guess?
Yeah.
Well. Well, does anybody have any, first of all, for some history from me on this ordinance? I'll wait a few more minutes for people log on. All right? This is a fairly new ordinance, too. I think it was adopted last year. If my minutes, if the minutes serve me correct. And... Jeff Wright's here, huh?
Hi, Paul. Councilman President.
Jeff. Hello there. How you doing?
Slaving away.
Slaving away, huh?
Yeah.
You getting those streets squared away?
One segment at a time.
One block at a time, right, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
One block at a time. Okay. Let's see, you got Caleb? Is that Mr. It's Mr. Mack over there, right? Good evening, Mr. Mack. How are you?
Very good, very good.
Good. Okay, I'm waiting. Well, does anybody have any comments that they want to add or ask me any, ask me some questions about why I would like to send this back to the Plan Commission? Because that's all that, that's all that this, that's what this resolution is actually asking. So then the discussion can really take place with the Plan Commission. Because I'll have to remark it. Skylar, you got any, do you have any comments for us? You're muted.
What's the recommendations that are, so what are the recommendations that you're going to require the Plan Commission to consider?
That they leave the section that talks about the section of regulating private property and a total, and a basic discussion on the premise of the site plans in negotiating with developers on their canopy areas in their, in their property. On looking at trying to get them to come up with a replant program instead of, and so I, I read the ordinance and I think that there's some tweaking that needs to be done on the premise of having private parties develop and protect the tree canopy for Michigan City when Michigan City is doing, not doing a very good job on their own tree, tree board on replanning and getting trees in there. Now, you, we want to take from private individuals and use their trees for our tree canopy without any compensation. So I, I guess for me, that falls into premises that you're taking private property. Some people.
We're not.
That's a question.
There's no, there's no taking involved in it.
Hold on a moment.
It's a regulation. It's a regulation. So there's not a taking here.
You're taking, okay. Yes, Mr. Mack.
Um, I'm just, I didn't read it all. I'm just going by talking to a few people. Is there a differential here between how a private individual in my yard, any tree, I can do what I want to, and then having a company come in? Because in general, corporations have a lot of money. And if a corporation decides to come into Michigan City and implement their ideas that they had in planning without the input of any of us, it just seems like a whole lot of money could be able to just, you know, turn us into concrete. If, if a corporation is, now, as far as I know, every individual home, you know, you can do what you want with your trees. But if you are a big group that is seriously financed, I would, I would make a big distinction between me and them and our purposes and my purposes and theirs. Is there some clarity you can give me on that?
Yes, uh, yes. In the ordinance, it, it talks about that in Section D, Mr. Mack. And under the top heading, it says "Any private property located within the city limits as of December 31st, 2018." And it talks about multifamily dwellings, construction, any grading, filling, any clearing collectively or individually, cutting of protected trees or areas of the tree canopy. So the way I read this ordinance is the tree canopy is out on the drip line and hitting public property that you have, you're, you could be subject to the standards within this ordinance. The only thing that I don't think is questionable if Nippsco wants to cut a tree for power lines or something, something like that. But I, I just think that we need to have some more discussion on it. And I I truly believe that the way I read this is that the language, if it says "any private property," that means a developer, that means me, and I.
Can I clarify a little bit for you?
Yeah.
Okay, if I just clarify really quickly?
Hold, hold on a minute. Let, let me finish, all right, before Dr. Arnett. Is the permit process, I, I believe that all people will have to look at getting a permit. And I don't think that people should have to stop construction because when you're doing construction and you've got heavy equipment in an area, you're going to ruin most of the trees that are in there because you're gonna, you're gonna do terrible damage to their root structures. I mean, the whole concept is we need to look at a replant program so people can develop their property the way that they want in that old suit and be more ecological, more friendly to what you guys and what I say, the Tree Board and other people want to do. I don't think we should limit private developers on how they're developing their property or, or an individual. As I say, for individual, there's some, there are still some big tracts of land in Michigan City. And if somebody has the money to buy it and then they have to negotiate with the city for how they can develop it or, or put homes on it? Because people are always crying about, we don't have enough development in the city on affordable homes or, or good homes or... I mean, there's 15 acres over on, I think 10 or 15 acres on Woodland Avenue that could be developed. And it's heavily wooded. So are you gonna tell somebody you can't develop that if they buy it? Or they're gonna buy it? And I just think it's not really suitable to promote growth in the city. Take, for example, there's 40 acres for sale right now on Hitchcock Road. And anybody that goes on the west side of town knows that that area is heavily wooded. That could be a nice addition into the city if somebody bought that and they wanted to be a friendly annexation. There's a water line that goes right down Hitchcock Road to the other development on Hitchcock across Highway 20. I just, I think that we need to go to the Plan Commission and have them revisit this. And the Tree Board needs to manage the trees in the city and get them, get more trees planted and using the private sector to oyster their tree canopy. I, I just think it's a taking out private property. I really do. Yes, Dr. Arnett? Go ahead.
I mean, just a couple of things that are contained within the ordinance. I think they answer your questions and speak to your concerns quite well. And I think you'll find that this ordinance actually does just about everything you're seeking it to do. The first is that if you go to Section 3B, under exemptions, that provision there, this only pertains to unsubdivided land that is up for construction. So to answer Councilman Mack's question, no. This, like, if you're just a homeowner, you know, you, you can do what you want with your trees on your property. It has, it doesn't even cover that. If you continue and go to Section 5B, designated areas for tree removal, you'll find additional exemptions. So, you know, in and within 10 feet of an approved building footprint or manufactured home space, within clear areas of visibility triangles, within eight feet from an approved outdoor recreation area, with an approved stormwater retention, detention area, within six feet of utility easements. There's a number of exemptions. So by the time a developer has proposed their construction plans, most of the trees in those tracts of land fall under those exempted categories. In the event that there is still a tree that is considered or classified as protected after all of those exemptions, if the developer chooses to remove it, they may do so. The only thing the ordinance requires is that they replant according to certain specifications. And there's a table for that at the end. So I think it's kind of doing everything you're asking it to do already.
Yeah. Where's the section that you're talking about on the replant?
Um, if you go to Section 7, it talks about credit for existing trees. And then it also talks about credit or replacement per large tree. And it has a table that goes by the diameter of the tree and what the replant expectations would be. And then if the developer doesn't want to replant, you know, there's also an option to pay it to a fund for the city to be able to purchase trees to plant elsewhere. So, I mean, it's a pretty flexible ordinance. And like I said, by the time you get through all of the exemptions, there's usually not very many protected trees left on a parcel anyways, which, you know.
Do you have any, do you have any examples that this thing was implemented on and, and were successful developments?
Sure. I mean, I think at like the last design review board that I was at, it was for that large apartment complex that was going in. And I took a look at the plan and, you know, per this ordinance and the specifications within it, none of the trees were protected and therefore didn't invoke the ordinance.
And, and, and the developer had to go ahead with a tree survey, which cost a couple of grand, and...
That's pretty typical, though. A lot of, most places do that, just as a standard.
What, what do you mean, most places do that? Do you have a list of cities that have something like this? I don't know if these questions were asked when this was passed and...
They weren't. We, we looked at how we came up with the ordinance. We surveyed other cities that have this. Maryville, I believe, has one in the region. This was workshopped at least three times. So, and we brought in developers. And we worked with the developers to accomplish this. Hence the exemptions that you're seeing in their exemption, part of this ordinance. These were, we worked with the developers to come up with these exemptions. It wasn't, it wasn't just, you know, us coming up with them. We, we negotiated back and forth with developers. With respect to the regulation of private land, everything inside of a city just about is regulated. It's through the zoning enabling legislation. We regulate on private land how big your house can be, where your setbacks are, where your driveway is.
Yeah, and we have a process to, excuse me, we have a process to appeal that, too. Is there a process to appeal this? Or does it go to the Tree Board? Or does it go to the Zoning Board?
Probably the Board of Works.
Or does it go to Plan Commission?
The, 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 who, what you're trying to remove.
Well, I didn't, I didn't see anything in here about an appeal process.
Well, if it's part of the zoning code, it's the Board of Zoning, it does.
Okay, but there's a permit process or a generally a who goes out? I mean, one thing I want to respond to, Dr. Arnett, on, on what you're talking about on the tree replacements, is that I will say that under Section 6, it talks about tree replacement standards. That protected trees shall not be removed, damaged, or other improperly pruning or destroyed unless a tree removal permit is issued by the city. If a protected tree is shown in the landscaping plan for any reason, it shall be replaced. And then it gets into Section 3. If the protected tree that is shown on the approved landscape plan is removed in violation of the zoning ordinance, the value of the tree removed is determined by the city forester. What, let me ask you, is that, isn't there some kind of or tree credits? I see that unless the city forester determines there's insufficient room for healthy tree growth. Well, we got a lot of language on these trees. And I think it can be simplified. This whole regu, this whole regulation on private property, I just have, I really have a problem with it. And I, I'm not into controlling development to that extent. If, if you want to have an ordinance that works, first, we should get the Tree Board working and replanning trees and, and coming up with a program to get people to adopt trees. And I don't see that we've even gotten to that point because I guess what really, really the emphasis for me is that Michigan City did nothing for three years on planting of trees. And then you come along with an ordinance that you want to take credit for people who have been, who have and want to develop a piece of property and to use their canopy to make it look better for, I don't know if it's, people want to feel better about it or what, what the whole angle of this was on the tree canopy. And I understand that people were talking about, we're losing X amount of the tree canopy. Well, don't you think that's because people, the city wasn't planting trees and weren't planting trees of substance for three years and the Tree Board wasn't functioning properly? So with, with that, with that thought, that the Tree Board actually, when this ordinance was passed, when this ordinance was passed in 2019, there was an additional appropriation of $50,000 appropriated and passed at that, I think at that same meeting. But it wasn't connected to this ordinance. But that's what I, what I will say is that I was an individual that found out that the Tree Board wasn't funded for three years. That's, to me, we shouldn't worry about funding the Tree Board before we start regulating private property so, private property so heavily. And I can, I understand that you guys worked together with and looked at other cities and that. But don't you think that we should try to get the city proper together on what they're doing and, and coming up with some ideas to plant some more trees on the greenways in these communities, in our community? Like putting these utility lines in ground, in the grounding area? You know, like for streetlights? So we could plant more trees on the greenways? There's, there's all kinds of ways to do things. That, that's, that's the way I'm looking at this. That we should do things to get our self as an example together. And then go and come up with a voluntary program for development sites instead of heavily regulating the sites. If you have any more questions for me, I, I mean, that is correct, right? The Tree Board wasn't funded for three years before this $50,000 was passed. Is that correct, Skylar?
No. I have no idea. I'm not on the Tree Board, nothing to do with that. And this ordinance was passed in 2018.
According to my, according to my records, it was passed in 19. And it was.
I don't believe so. I don't believe that's correct.
Were made in 19. But it, but it, neither here nor there. The fact of the matter is, is that the Tree Board wasn't funded for three years. And I was told, and let me, let me put one other thing out here. I do know in the area that I represent, there's a lot of greenway space that could be planted. So I guess the Tree Board needs to get some money from the mayor and start planting some trees of substance in these areas. And, you know, I've talked to the city arborist about coming up with an adoption program for these trees. And I haven't, I haven't really had any feedback on, on that. I do know that we did plant a bunch of trees last year and because they have $50,000. But I think we could have done, I think we could have done a lot better. So I mean, there's a lot of pros and cons here. I'm just thinking that if we want to get some of these tracts of land developed, why do we want to put all these obstacles in the way? I, I don't, I don't see a, I think the city needs to get their act together on tree planting and tree maintenance and coming up with programs on putting utility lines under the ground. Or some of these are like on the streetlights. I think they can be buried 24 inches in the ground. And if we have to pay for it, then we pay for it to get more trees planted. I know where I live. I had five, when I moved into the house I live at, I had five northern maples on the green space. You know how many are there today? None. You know how many have been replanted? As hard, semi-hard maples? None. And that's not the only area of Michigan City that has had that happen. So I'm, I'm just saying, or just asking. I'm not saying that I'm totally opposed to something, but I think it can be tweaked some more to get a better product. That's, that's what I'm asking. Now, we continue the discussion with the Plan Commission. And just because other communities, we don't have to mirror everything that a different community does. We need to put something in place that fits our community and our needs. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Dad, I guess, you know.
Yeah, Mr. Demme. Good evening.
How you doing? I mean, I, do we have an example of somebody where development has been stifled because of this ordinance? Or has somebody not complied with this ordinance? Or what brings us here to, to change it? Because it's stifling development. Who's the person? Or do we know who, who's had their development stifled or who has not complied?
You want to answer that, Mr. Yar?
I'm not seeing anything stifled from a development side. There are people who haven't followed the rules who we've had to red tag. So it's more like you can either take a proactive approach and approach us and we'll give you all the rules and regulations. And then you follow the rules and regulations to get us to the permitting or the subdivision process. But if we have to take a reactive stance, then we're issuing red tags and stopping production when you haven't even told us what you're doing. So it's, it's two different paths. And most developers take a proactive approach, which I suppose, I speak with develop, many developers weekly. And I'm straight, I'm straightforward with the, with what has to happen from a, and this is all part of, at a subdivision process, which is way more involved than just a tree survey. A tree survey is a small piece of this. We're talking about topographicals, wetland maps, laying out your lots, figuring out where everything is going to go. So this regulation is like this much of a, of a, of the zoning code when we're regulating all kinds of other things that go on to this property. So yeah, if you take the proactive approach, then, then it goes, it goes very smooth. And that's how most people do. We, I've worked with developers. I know Dr. Arnett has as well. She's met with developers on their site. And everything goes smoothly. But on the reactive side, yeah, that, that's the part that's hard when you don't, you haven't told us anything that you're doing. And we have no plan for it. As of right now, even to, even the, on our books right now, to, to cut, to do any type of site improvement, you have to get a permit, period. This tree protection takes it a step further and gets us a replacement program. And this isn't a repetition of another place that we look. This actually, this ordinance is very custom designed for Michigan City. And in fact, it's a, it's a very, pretty simple ordinance compared to other cities that, that, you know, where it's housed. We, we made sure that it's housed in our landscaping plan. But to date, I've seen no stifling of development or, and most developers in other places, they're already having to deal with this. They're already doing this. So it's just another piece of, of, a part of development at that point.
Uh, Mr. President?
So, go ahead, Mr. Fitt. So, go ahead, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Uh, thank you. So, um, my question is to, uh, the planner or the forester. At the, uh, point of, uh, planning or development, when someone approaches the city and say, hey, we want to develop this parcel of land, is, uh, part of the property's assessment, given the, the parties involved with that process, the information about the, the tree ordinance and what's expected and what the rules are? Is it part of that process or is it, like you said, it's more of a reactionary thing?
As, as long as it's proactive, meaning they come to us and say, hey, I'm thinking about the, and, and Dr. Arnett, I'm sorry to miss, uh, let me, I'll, I'll just finish this and if there's something you want to add. Uh, as long as it's proactive, meaning, meaning that, and keep in mind, this only deals with unsubdivided land, okay? So if they come to us, which is typically what happens, they'll come to us and say, hey, I got, I bought a piece of land, done subdivided. I'm going to break it down into some smaller sections. At that point, that's when I say, all right, I'll look for wetlands. I'll look at the trees. And then I'll probably say, these are the things that I think you're going to have to put in place. Now, in other areas of the city, there might be topographical issues, meaning that we regulate dunes too. We regulate dunes and steep slopes and things of that nature. It just depends on the topography and where it is, uh, uh, councilman. But yes, that's all provided to them upfront. Up, as, as long as they let us know what they're doing and they're going through the subdivision process and, and in the pro, in the procedure that's laid out, yes, the answer is yes, it is all provided to them. And they know upfront all the things they have to do. Um, uh, they're going to give us their topographical map, their site plan, their ALTA plan, uh, their civil engineering. And then they're going to have their tree surveys, what trees they're going to save. We're going to be able to see on there where the footprint is and which trees we, we know are going to have to come out because they're in the footprint of that building. I hope that helps clarify a little bit.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Are you good with that, Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to basically clarify that they did get the information upfront, the, uh, the potential developers.
And Mr., Mr.-
Absolutely.
Don, Don, go ahead. Uh, Skylar? Skylar? Okay, yeah, I have a question for you. So Councilman Paul Purwalinski, in his discussion, brought up this piece of property on Woodland Ave that I had heard was trying to be developed. Uh, the developer went in there, started cutting trees down to no, and correct me if I'm wrong, to no knowledge of the city that this was taking place. And then all of a sudden, the city stopped him from doing it because he did not check in with the city to tell him exactly what he was doing. Is this, is this correct?
It is correct.
Okay, are you, are you, are you able, are you able to even talk about that? Or is that in some kind of litigation or, you know?
Not in litigation, but keep in mind the, what-
What happened-
What triggered it is-
Bring this thought to-
What triggered? So what happened was, uh, that was unsubdivided land. It'd never been subdivided. Hence, we still have these small pieces of land that aren't subdivided. Uh, that's, like I said, even do any type of earthwork moving, you still need a permit. Um, you might recall a few years ago, we had Martin Luther King and the corner of 12 clear cut.
Yeah.
That's what triggered the tree ordinance. That's the straw, that was the straw that broke the camel's back, if you want to say. That was it. Uh, that person got fined, but that, that, that was it. The clear cutting of that corner is what triggered and tripped all these tree, basically, we were talking about tree preservation, but that's really what triggered the tree preservation ordinance, was that, that, that specific location. Uh, with respect to the one on Woodland, um, it was just unsubdivided land. Uh, they hadn't picked, they hadn't brought us anything. Once we told them, hey, stop, cease, you know, just stop, tell us what you're doing, that's when they came and said, hey, we're actually going to do a four lot subdivision and here's, here's what we're going to lay out for you. So, but they never told us that. Typically, a developer will come and say, I'm going to lay out the subdivision because they're going to need water sewer. All these things are going to have to go in there. They would tell us that ahead of time. This person didn't ask anything and just started clear cutting the land and then everybody around it's asking questions. Um, you know, and we don't have an answer for them.
Okay.
So there was a lot of public outcry.
Thank you.
Um, we've got that project done, just so you know. Uh, it, it got subdivided and, and-
Let, let me ask you this much. I was at that one meeting that you had on that, uh, um, apartment complex, uh, that's going on, on, uh, is that Carol Ave? Off Carol Ave? Correct? Uh, how many, how many trees were saved in there, in that heavily wooded area?
Well, I believe Ms. Arnett reviewed that one. Uh, I think she spoke about that earlier. You can-
All of the trees in that particular plan fall within the exemptions that are outlined in the ordinance.
They're not, uh, they're not hardwood trees or, uh, what you can, you guys consider what's in the ordinance as, uh, excuse me, okay, um, well, what was, uh, so there was the combination of the giveback in the ordinance that they were allowed to, uh, cut as much down as they wanted, correct? In that development? It, no, I was at the, I was at the meeting, so I, maybe I misinterpreted what was said because I didn't hear nothing going on that was, um, wanting them to be, uh, uh, take exemptions for, uh, some of them trees. I, I thought I heard that they were basically all, uh, uh, undesirable trees in that area.
Well, like I said, after, after reviewing the plans and every tree on that property, more or less, falls within one of the exemptions that's outlined in the ordinance. So the, the ordinance wouldn't apply to those trees because they fall in exempted areas, in a building footprint, 10 feet around, things of that nature. So looking at the opponent, you can determine trees would be classified as protected and it didn't apply there.
Yeah.
Okay. So Skylar, let me ask you this. Uh, how many trees were saved on that Woodland Ave project? Even with stopping the, the, stopping the project and red tagging the project and whatever else came after that?
Um, I believe there were a few, a few, but very few. They'd already, they'd already cut down everything.
Very few, right? And probably very few are going to be saved, right? With the building of it? Did you guys accept the plan out there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So my point is, is that you're taking private possession, you're taking credit and possession of people's private property on their property to take credit for it on your tree canopy. That, that is, that is what you're doing and that's what you have done. You have taken, that is, that person's property on that land. And now you're telling them that he can't cut stuff down or harvest trees on his land if he wants to harvest them.
Oh, so you can't harvest in the city?
Hold, hold on a second. There are Dahlia wants to get in on the conversation.
Yes, thank you. So it's nothing to do with everyone's personal space. It's just when you're subdividing land, you have to follow a procedure so we can count what we are cutting down. If we're cutting down a 200-year-old oak, you're not going to replace it with a ceiling and say that's equal. And by the way, this credit for canopy, I'm not sure what you're talking about because our city has to pay to treat stormwater. Every large tree saves lots and lots of money to the sanitary department because it's, it's water you don't have to treat. So it's not just, you know, some kind of credit for canopy. And I'm not sure what that means, but the more trees we have, really the better it's going to be for our sanitary district and stormwater control.
Thank you.
Correct.
Well, that's all good, um, in the process. And what you said, Dahlia, that, that is a good, um, thought. But here's the other side of that coin. Three years, nobody planted any trees. And they've been cutting down trees at a, at a pretty good rate in Michigan City. So it's like, Skylar, what Mr. York said. Wherever this lot was, uh, supposedly clear cut, that was the straw that broke the camel's back. Well, and a lot of restrictions came in and taking of Dahlia, that individual that owns that land, those trees are his property. They are his property. I'm, and that's the way I truly look at it. I truly look at it that way.
We do have permitting. Permitting is necessary to do any kind of work in the city. So, you know, I disagree with that somewhat. And second of all, the reason our trees are disappearing is because we need more maintenance. And, you know, that is a budgetary concern. So we do need to maintain the trees that we have. If they don't have professional maintenance, then, you know, they're not going to survive.
Yeah. Dr. Arnett?
Um, I, you know, wanted to say that, you know, in my review of this ordinance, um, I have a PhD in legal history where my dissertation specifically examined what constitutes a legal taking of land and property within the frameworks of the Constitution. And I could tell you, this ordinance does not do that.
Well, I appreciate that. And, uh, I, I do understand that you're a highly educated individual and that I respectfully disagree with that opinion. And as an elected official in Michigan City, I think that I, I can speak my concerns. And the fact of the matter is, is that those trees on that individual's property are his property. And that's what I think you have to look at. Now, if you want people to go through a audit, and we'll call it a tree audit of his property, and that can be very expensive depending on how much property you're talking about. Is, don't you think maybe it'd be better to get an upfront donation than to go through all that hassle and then going back and checking again? And, and getting some money for, uh, for the tree, for the tree maintenance and planting the trees? Because Dahlia, I'll tell you, at the rate we're going and not having any trees planted, we don't have to worry about tree maintenance. It's as simple as that. And if you don't do something about all the telephone, not telephone wires, but just streetlight wires that are exposed on the greenway, I think maybe we could do an audit and see how many more trees that we could get planted of substance. I know around my house, I could get five planted. So, you know, I mean, I really think that we could do better than what we have. I do. Yes, yes, Mr. York?
No, I don't have anything-
I'm going to get ready to end this meeting because we got a, uh, um, six o'clock, if, if everybody's okay with that, we have a six o'clock, um-
I have one question.
For the, uh, finance committee. So Don, Don, what, what did you, did you want to say something else, Don? And I see that, Mr. Dammey.
I had no questions.
Okay, Mr. Dammey?
Uh, just a quick question. So is the, the argument is that you're saying they should be able to just clear cut all trees? Because you said it's on their property. Are you saying that they should just be able to clear cut all trees on the property?
I'm saying that I'm looking at a developer should be able to come up and if he wants to develop his property to the maximum potential, he has requirements that he has to, that are already in the ordinance that they have to plant on the buffer zone and things like this. Now, for an individual to get maximum out of his property if he wants to develop it, I think that instead of having three evergreen trees planted, that maybe they should talk about having trees of substance planted on those buffer zones on a development. I think there's some changes that could be made to make it better for the city and even get more trees planted out of it.
But, but you want those trees planted at the cost of the city, not of the development?
No, that, the ordinance specifically talks about when you develop a property on the buffer zone, the developer has to, uh, put up so many per, I think it's, uh, 40 feet. And, you know, these things could be tweaked around so that more trees are planted and not, uh, you could condense it in the maybe 20 feet spaces and get, get more trees planted. And that developer can still develop his property so he can get maximum amount of use out of it. And, and, and not trying to take away from the planning department, but I think that the planning department shouldn't be telling somebody how many units, if he can get so many units in a partial, that he shouldn't be, uh, limited on having trees put in, in areas and, and, uh, kind of stifling his development. And, and that's in the ordinance on these buffer zones. And I think that we, I think that we should have the discussion to really tweak this ordinance. Because I didn't go back, but I, I see that I should have gone back and got all the minutes from this, uh, particular ordinance to see what the discussion was. Because I think it's a major impact, um, the whole zoning code to the city. Does that, does that answer your que, question, Mr. Dammey?
Uh, somewhat, um, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right, well, if everybody's in agreement, I'm going to move to end this workshop and, uh, get ready for this, uh, finance committee. Thank you.